All right, good evening, welcome to the June 5th, 2018 Manchester Town Council. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Howell is not here tonight. We did speak to her, but she will not be in attendance. First order of official business approval of the May 8th, 2018 minutes has been submitted to members of the council. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Have you had a chance to review them? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
I make a motion, we approve the May 8th, 2018 minutes as submitted.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then we have the April 2018 treasurer's report. I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report as prepared.
Make a motion that we receive the April 2018 treasurer's report as prepared.
Yes, prepared.
Prepared.
I'll second that.
Motion is second, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then we have the check register from this past month of May. Is there a motion to receive the check register with the treasurer's report to come next month?
I'll make a motion that we receive the May 2018 check register.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So for the housekeeping, for mayor's report here, just a couple of announcements. We are moving into the summer months, a fairly slow month, or slow couple of months here for town business unless we have unforeseen circumstances. Kind of been through the budget cycle at this point. The budget will be flipping over as of July 1st. But we do have, you know, ongoing businesses, we always do. Yard waste is something that will continue for now on Fridays. There was some discussion about moving that to Mondays. It may move to Mondays beginning into July. We'll do our best to communicate if there's going to be any changes for that, but for now it will continue on Fridays. We do have a request though, to make sure things are either in containers, like in some sort of containers easy for the guys to pick up and dump, or those Kraft brown bags that you can get at, you know, the hardware store and things. It really slows them down if things are just kind of dumped at the side and then they have to, you know, pick everything up manually. Holiday closing, the town office will be closed on Wednesday, July 4th, obviously for the 4th of July. And we are moving into carnival season again, which seems hard to believe it's coming around again already. The parade is set for Tuesday, July 3rd, right here on York Street at 7:00 PM. And the fire department's putting on fireworks again on Thursday, July 5th. And then one other thing, we had invited a young man here from Ed Valley Elementary, 4th grade. He participated in the If I Were a Mayor essay contest. Went over, as did the last couple of years, and spoke to the 4th graders. 4th graders then write an essay saying what they would do if they were, you know, mayor of their hometown. A young man named Landon Webb was a state semifinalist. So we invited him tonight, unfortunately he was not able to make it. So we'll see if he can make it to a subsequent meeting to kind of talk a little bit about his essay and maybe give you guys a brief on that. Very impressive group as a whole and certainly, you know, pretty unique young man. And that's all I have. Turn it over to town administrator.
Okay, good evening, mayor and council members of the community. We'll start with the May 2018 administrative report. There's been no changes on the SHA project for the Sheets project. The liquor store project on Main Street, I'll give you an update on that. The grading permit has been applied for by the owner. We have not received a demo permit to demo that building as of yet. So that's where we stand on that. The Route 30 Alternatives Meeting, you have on my report, we had a tentative date of August 29th. Actually, we had dates of August 15th and 16th. Commissioners cannot make it those two days, they're at a conference. And now I've been told today that August 29th will not work because that is a county planning and zoning meeting that evening. So we're going to have to reach into September. So I'll be getting in touch with everyone to see what dates in September work for you folks. Our personnel policy update workshop, we had our initial meeting, which was held on May 30th. We did, of course, some work on the job descriptions. I'm recommending to the mayor and the council, possibly to save time, that we, the administration staff, are allowed to reach out to our attorney to look over our personnel policy and make any changes that they see fit. I believe with us meeting in a workshop, I think what's going to happen is we are going to make changes that may not meet the fair labor standard rules, and we may be wasting our time in a way. Chief Hess and I found something right out of the gate, which we were working on over the last several weeks, which we felt was pretty secure until our attorney straightened us out on that. And those are the things that I'm a little concerned about. Once we get over that hurdle, then we will bring the personnel policy back to this group at a workshop with our attorney to go over the changes that were made and why those changes were made. Now, that being said, I would like to get some prices back to see how much this is going to cost us and then report back to the mayor and the council. I thought I'd have prices tonight, but our attorney has been doing depositions the last three days, and I wasn't able to get anything back. So I'll be reaching out to you on that. So, and I'll get your opinion on that and go from there. I just don't want to waste everybody's time. That's what I don't want to do. And we all are in agreement that we want to do it right and do it lawfully and make sure we have our bases covered. So I'll be reaching out to everyone on that. Tonight, this is an action item. Since this is, this position is time sensitive, the approval of the Director of Public Works job description. I know folks have been commenting on some updates, which we included on the updates, and you have the final draft on that. That is time sensitive because that job's going to be going, actually it is out on, you know, for application right now. So I'd like to take care of that. One thing that's not on my report, but I want to bring the folks up to speed. If you remember, a few months ago, Dave Reese from the county came in and he talked about the additional two stops for the Trailblazer system in Carroll County. Today, Dave went before the county commissioners and the county commissioners agreed to put it out for 30-day review. And hopefully, if everything works out well and there's no problems during the public comment session, that this system will take off for the two stops in Manchester on July 16th. So that's going to be very helpful for this area.
Is it still the post office?
Yes, it's the post office and Manchester Manor. Those are the two stops.
Okay.
So, more to come on that. You'll prob, I'll probably send you an email, they'll come out and put the sign up and everything, so I'll report back to you on that. Okay, code enforcement, you have in front of you the monthly status report. Under code enforcement, we did have a disorderly House of Bateman hearing in regards to 2735 Overlook Court, which was held on May 21st. Under miscellaneous items, we have a sustainable communities work group meeting for Wednesday, June 20th at 10:00 AM here at Town Hall. Something I want the group to think about, and I have it on my list, is the future use of our former police station. So over the next month or so, you know, kind of get back with me with some ideas of what you'd like to see with that building. I did reach out to a realtor to see, you know, what the going price was if we did decide to sell that building. So I do have some of that information. I do have some information on renting that area out, so, you know, just put your thinking caps on and think about what you'd like to do with that. Also, Kelly's going to talk a little bit about the rebate that we received back from our insurance carrier. You want to take?
Sure. Sure, we were able to lower our, what they call experience mod, and that's being able to minimize the number of injuries on the job. So Chesapeake has given their policyholders a corporate dividend, and we received, I gave you a copy of you, almost $8,000 in a dividend check, which was, you know, pretty substantial. And even better news is for FY '19, our rates for FY '18 totaled about $107,000. In FY '19, it's going to go down to about $60,000. So that's, you know, solid $40,000 savings. So it's great news. I just want to let you all know. So, good news. Finally.
Yeah, a lot of credit goes to our staff. You know, we try to have bi-monthly safety meetings, as many as we can, so a lot of credit goes to them on that.
Yep.
My last item on the administrative report, which is not on your sheet either, I'd like to reach out and thank the auxiliary to the Manchester Fire Department for donating the flower pots outside. And some of our staff here, Kelly and Tracy, I think they got some flowers today and they really looked nice. So we're really happy that they donated those to the town to brighten up our, the front of our building. So, okay. Moving right along, we'll get into the public works report. You have in front of you the monthly water and wastewater status report for May. You'll see, one thing to point out real quick is you'll see the average gallons of water pump per day went up to 305. People are filling their pools. They're not supposed to, but they're filling their pools. And chances are, you will see that number kind of go down next month possibly, but that's what we account that to. I want to congratulate Water and Wastewater operator Gary Epley. He was inducted into the CCV's Hall of Fame a few weeks ago, so our hats off to Gary. Currently, just for your information, we have three current employees that are in the emergency services Hall of Fame, and that's something to say. So, under wastewater, the emergency generator at Haley Hills 1 Pump Station, that's still out of service, repairs scheduled for later this week. The rehab stabilization tank number one is approximately 80% complete. Under stormwater and MPDS, the upgrade to the Maiden Lane Stormwater Pipe has been completed. Michelle Road Stormwater Management Facility upgrade, currently the county's awaiting for appraisal for an additional three acres needed for that project from the resident out at that site. This will probably be the last time I'll talk about the Route 27 Stormwater Managed Facility. You have in front of you a joint letter from Carroll County and the town of Manchester, which was sent to both the Secretary of MDE and the Director of DNR. This is in regards to recovering money spent by both the county and the town in regards to the project, which the current construction permit has been suspended. So that probably is done. Whether or not we see any funding, I can't answer that. We'll have to see once, if we get a response back from the letter that was sent to MDE on that. But that'll be the last time you'll probably see that. We had inspections of our stormwater outfalls, that took place on 5/818 with no problems. Maintenance roads and parks, skate park upgrade and fundraiser, that went very well, excellent. I just commend all the volunteers and the town staff that's working on that project. They delivered the ramps a few weeks ago. Our crews helped them. They're structurally sound. They had a very good fundraiser. Today, Mr. Fryer stopped in and he gave the town 1,700 and some dollars in donations.
Seventeen hundred.
So what we're going to be doing, the town's going to be purchasing some skate light to upgrade the, some of the other ramps. That money is going to buy some additional skate light, so we're very impressed. I'm also working with them on doing a demonstration on National Night Out, possibly getting them involved in our fire department parade. And also, June 21st, which is the first day of summer, there's a national skateboard night out. And both Chief Hess and I are working with them to possibly close a street down and let them skate on the street for a short amount of time. And then they would go to another location, possibly the carnival grounds or Christmas Tree Park and have a cookout for that night. So this is all coming together. Those folks are fantastic. I mean, they're moving forward big time, so just hang on. That's, they're really doing a fantastic job. Our folks did complete some patchwork on Westminster Street. Of course, they've been tied up on grass mowing, which we all know that. Luckily, we did not have any flooding issues with the heavy rains. So we do have something, we have the action item on the approval of the DPW job, and also later on in a discussion on the agenda, we have the electric to the Pavilion at Charles Quest. So, any questions on my report? I thought my report would be short because the meeting was a week early, but unfortunately, the last several days, things have really come together, so.
Any questions for town administrator before we get into the action items? Everybody should be fairly familiar with this Director of Public Works job description. I think everybody that's here tonight was at a work session where we went through a lot of this, and Steve and the staff, looks like they made the updates and some of the, just to clean up the language and things that we had discussed. Does anybody see any issues?
No.
So, if there are no issues or questions, do we have a motion, this is a time sensitive
We were averaging 100, 120, so it did drop substantially.
thing, is we need to have this tidied up so when we start getting responses to the advertisements,
Unfortunately, 15 of the calls were out of town.
where we have this ready to go?
I'll make a motion that we accept the job description for Director of Public Works.
We've been heading into Hampstead a lot lately, in the immediate area down there. We had two Part 1 crimes, both of them involved larceny from autos, unlocked vehicles, loose
I'll second that motion.
Motion is second, any other discussion? I don't think that was anybody outside.
change being taken out of the console.
Yeah.
There was tags taken off one vehicle.
It wasn't a sign. Hearing none, is there, all's in favor say aye.
We had it, we had it where they stole tags from another vehicle in Westminster, came
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we have that, we have that done.
up here, got a set of tags, put the stolen tags on the car up here, and then disappeared
That was the only action item I had written down, Steve.
That is correct.
with the lady's tags up here.
The other item is on your agenda.
And that was around Princess Court.
Yeah, we have an agenda item.
I have an idea who the suspect is, we're working on that right now.
Okay. All right, we'll move into the police report then. Chief?
The latest one we just had, we took today, was a metal detector out of the back of a Call your attention to the screen.
We got a glitch.
pickup truck. So it was a young man that just got back from jail that we're looking into. So we, low arrest, three persons criminally charged, minor offenses, the trespassing, the violation of peace of order, they're all kind of related. And then the one from Manchester Valley High School, we had a child, a kid up there with a knife in his backpack. He was running around with a habitual runaway, and then he got into an argument with his parents, and then he took his backpack, left home, and then went to school with the knife in the backpack, started working with him. Traffic enforcement's been extremely low for us. We had a shortage in staff, which we're getting through right now. We did focus on Haley and Augusta. The primary focus was around a red light down on Haley Avenue. We did issue a couple citations down there, that was where most of them were issued, and the verbal warnings. We are up to 249 total cases for heroin across the county. We have 104 heroin-related, 14 fentanyl, 37 fatalities. And then for the month of May, 34, which is low, that's a low number, 10 heroin-related, four fentanyl, and five fatalities, and four pending down the MA. Hampstead is still holding at five, we're holding at six, we had zero for the month. Sykesville, two, Tonton Town, 12, Westminster, 87, and Mount Harries creeping up there with Sergeant Seleski, I don't know if you all knew him, most of you did. He retired from law enforcement after serving four years in the Army, 21 years in Baltimore, eight years in Manchester. He was definitely an asset when I joined up here and came on board. He was by my side, he supported me a lot. We're going to miss him, but he's going to retire, and I think in August, he's heading out west. He's going to take a road trip, go out west. And by himself too. He's grabbing his truck, packing it up, and going out there. We did give him a little going away party, he didn't want much, so we got him a shadow box, and I got him a couple of his top shelf bottles of his favorite poison. So we hired a Manchester town resident, his name is Frank Eberts, he's in training the last couple of days. He's got to meet qualifications for Maryland Police Training. He recently retired out of Baltimore. He's very active in our community with the Boy Scouts and baseball. Him and his wife live in town, they have their two children. Frank served four years in the United States Marine Corps. He has his bachelor's and master's from John Hopkins University, widespread of police experience. He worked for me in the organized crime division. He retired as a lieutenant, and he's joined forces up here and has plans on staying. So he's got a lot of juice in him, he's still young, and he's ready to work another 20 years. Last but not least, Corporal Jeffrey Kazmeyer, we decided to promote him to sergeant. He has successfully completed his MPCTC supervisory school over the Maryland Police Training Commission. He's definitely stepped up to the plate on more than one occasion. He's been very loyal, he's been very dedicated, he's very respected in the community, and he was deserving of this. He has experience of 30 years plus in law enforcement, and I'm pretty certain he's going to continue to do a good job. We'll continue to keep our community and police department heading in the right direction. Our goal is constantly to improve the police department and, of course, maintain the great quality of life that we all have here in Manchester. And we're going to stay on top of that, we're going to continue to move forward with that. If anybody has any questions, I'll do them.
Any questions for the chief? All right, moving on. Steve, do you want to give a little bit of a, I noticed there was some emails, but just for the record, give a little rundown on where we are with this electric pavilion?
Correct. Back in February, you approved a bid to KNC Enterprises to do the work at the Nature Center, run electric to the Pavilion and the Observatory for $4,460. Unfortunately, KNC, due to their workload, cannot perform the job. So we have a couple options. We can rebid the entire project again. We can encumber those monies and rebid the project, or we can go with the second bid, which was Matt Leister Electrical Service LLC for $5,800. Of course, that's a difference of $1,340, but we're still under the $8,000 budgeted figure. There was a question about, has Mr. Leister done any work for us in the past, and he has not. I did receive three references. I was able to talk to two of the three. One was a commercial job, and the other one was a residential job, and they were very pleased with his work. So we have a couple different options we can, we can go with.
So do we have to make a motion to withdraw the last one?
Yes, you should make a motion to rescind your motion that was made back on February 13th. That would start it all fresh, and then, you know, whatever direction you would like us to, like us to take, we can.
I'd like to make a motion that we rescind the motion from February 13th.
13th.
For KC Enterprises for $4,460 for the electrical work to the Nature Center Pavilion.
I'll second that.
Motion is second, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So now we're back open.
Now we're back.
And everything's from a procedural standpoint is, is fine, we're protected if we just take the next bidder. We don't have to, we're under no obligation to rebid and delay the project.
We are not.
Okay. Anyone have any thoughts on taking the next, most qualified bidder as opposed to rebidding?
I think that would be fine.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
Okay.
Well, I will make a motion that with regard to electric to the Charles Quest Nature Center Pavilion, that we accept the bid by Matt Leister Electrical Services LLC in the amount of $5,800.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is second, any other discussion? No, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so I think we're good to go there. So hopefully we can, we can move forward now. Anything else before we move into questions in the community? We have a couple of folks, Ruth Doxson. There she is. I was looking up front, usually sit up front.
First, Chief Hess, you were talking about how great some of your men are doing, and you're promoting them and all, and so forth. And I wanted to let you know that I think that you have done a tremendous job since you've been here too.
Oh, thank you, ma'am.
What I came to talk about is yard sale signs. I don't know if anybody has noticed, but some people leave their yard sale signs up until the wind and the rain disintegrate them enough to blow away. We have one at the corner of Route 1 in front of BBT Building that has been up since October. And it's still, and of course, they're not having a yard sale. I was wondering if either the police department or the town council can do something such as fining people. And I can see that people will say, well, I'm just going to put the street name on, not the number, so that in a couple of days, when the police notice that it's still up, they won't know which house. Well, if the police are just going through town and they see a sign with no house number, they can just rip it down, and then they won't get a lot of customers. So they'll pretty soon find out. I don't know if anything can be done about it, but I wanted to bring it up because I think it's a nice word, particularly along the main route, along Route 30. And that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I think we can, do we know what the official rules, I know traditionally, right, if you want to put a yard sale sign up, you can staple it to a telephone pole or put a sign up. You're supposed to take it down pretty close to after.
I know, I've gotten calls where at certain intersections, the yard sale signs have been obstructing the view. I've removed signs off of poles for lost animals numerous times. And yeah, I mean, these folks have these yard sales, they have a lost animal, and they just leave the signs up, you know, and it does create a problem. I, without looking into the code, looking into it, I don't know, I don't know what we can do. We possibly can do something. It gets a little touchy, you know, you don't want to get on somebody's private property, but then again, if it's on the public right of way, that, that's fair game basically, so.
We can probably do this for now, I would think, right? We can, we can look into the code piece. I don't, I know we've kind of read the code some, I don't know what it says, if it says anything specifically about yard sale signs. But in the meantime, if our guys are out and they see dated signs, just rip them down.
Yeah, same, you know, we hit the same problem with the free newspapers. That's a big problem. And the free newspapers are thrown out, they get washed down the street, just like right now. I guarantee you that we have storm drains covered with free newspapers. And the water's not getting into the storm drain because the newspapers are obstructing the flow. I mean, that's a battle we've been fighting for the last four years with the, with the newspaper companies.
Can't we do something like if they don't have a box, that they can't deliver it?
I can't answer that, I don't, you know.
I mean, I, I pretty much told them, if they, I have a newspaper box. If you can't put it in my box, then don't leave me a newspaper. And I, even the Carroll County Times, I called them and said, don't throw my paper in the yard. When I get home, it's soaked. There's no sense in me getting it.
I mean, we're.
If she does, they do put it in the box, but.
Yeah, some other towns that I've been through, not so, not so much Manchester because we kind of watch that, but there's been some towns that I've been through that some of the homes have 20 newspapers laying in, 20 merchandisers laying in front of their house, you know, and it just, it just creates a hassle. And same way with the signs, so.
Yeah, I don't want to speak on something I don't know a ton about though, but I know that that's a frustration for a lot of towns and homeowners. There is, there are some rules though about, it's tough to get them to stop, and it kind of takes a proactive, like I don't know that we as a town can say you can't have a free newspaper. Homeowners can proactively say, don't put it at this house, but there's very, at least my understanding, limited understanding of it is, like the teeth to stop them from doing it are pretty weak.
When I did go into, when I did some research on this, I actually talked to the one company, and I said, listen, when your delivery person, when they pull up there and they see 10 newspapers that have not been picked up, tell them, don't throw another one out there. Nobody's there.
No sense.
The place is empty, okay? You know, so they did kind of work on that, but things change, different employees change, and so on and so forth, and yeah.
Maybe we just need like an Eagle Scout project to gather old free newspapers and go dump them back at whoever's generating them.
Yeah, that's true. Exactly, exactly. Let me do some checking on that.
Okay.
I'll do some checking on the yard sale signs and see what.
Back to the first point, I'd be surprised if there's not something that addresses signage. Not yard sales, but signage.
Right, there's signage for our election signs, remember that?
Yeah.
Steve had a collection of mine, I didn't know the rule the first time I ran.
because we kind of watch that, but there's been some towns that I've been through that some of the homes have twenty newspapers laying in, twenty merchandisers laying in front of their house, you know, and it just, it just creates a hassle. And same way with the signs, so.
Yeah, I don't want to speak on something I don't know a ton about, though, but I know that that's a frustration for a lot of towns and homeowners. There is, there are some rules, though, about, it, it's tough to get them to stop, and it kind of takes a proactive, like, I don't know that we as a town can say you can't have a free newspaper. Homeowners can proactively say, don't put it at this house. But there's very, at least my understanding, limited understanding of it is, like, the teeth to stop them from doing it are pretty weak.
When I did go into, when I did some research on this, I actually talked to the one company. And I said, listen, when your delivery person, when they pull up there and they see ten newspapers that have not been picked up, tell them, don't throw another one out there. Nobody's there, the place is empty, okay? You know, so they did kind of work on that, but things change, different employees change, and so on, so forth, and, yeah.
Maybe we just need like an Eagle Scout project to gather old free newspapers and go dump them back at whoever's.
Yeah, that's true, exactly, exactly. Let me do some checking on that. I'll do some checking on the yard sale signs and see what.
Back to the first point, I'd be surprised if there's not something that addresses signage. Not yard sales, but signage.
Right, there's signage for our election signs, remember that? Steve had a collection of mine, I didn't know the rule the first time I ran. And I said, my signs are missing. And he's like, oh, I have four of them up here. And I found, I learned the rules real quick, but.
Alright, we can look into those.
Probably something we can do.
Ms. Barbara Bundy?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilpersons. The Kelly and Police Chief and Town Administrator. I went on the town website, and I happened to notice that the back of my house was on review. And I was wondering, was there any kind of ordinance or covenant about putting a person's house on the website without their permission?
You said it was on our website?
Then I have another one.
You, you went on our website, and your house's picture is on their website?
The one that the community has.
Okay, because it's not on the town, only because I do it, and I, I don't have that.
Not the town per se, probably the one for, I think is the separate one for the neighborhood.
Crossroads?
Yeah, I think it might be.
Oh, probably Facebook.
It's probably Facebook page.
You'd have to talk to the administrator of the Facebook page, I would think.
Because I want it taken down, because I just thought that was rude and crude of the person who did it without asking me first. I mean, it went from a polite and respectful website, now it's more like the Inquirer. But anyway, I told the person, I found out who did it, and I told them very politely that the next time they want to be helpful, they can start a GoFund page for me, and they can help pay for the, for the, what do you call it? When they spray the back of the house.
A pressure wash?
Pow, yeah, a power wash, if they wanted to be helpful. Because I really would not do that to them, and the person I'm talking about, we used to be very good friends. But, you know, I would have appreciated if they would just come to me and tell me personally. You know, you don't have to broadcast my business over the website. And I just wanted to know, was there a covenant in place for the town of Manchester about the exterior of a person's home? Does anybody?
What do you mean? Do you mean trashing things around, or do you mean the hat, what do you mean?
Like, in general, maintaining the exterior of your house? Like, does it have to be power washed every so often, or?
No.
I don't think you can do that.
No, we, we do not go into that much detail. If, if we look at a house, and let's say the siding is torn off, or the roof's partially off, or something like that, yes, we can talk to the homeowner about that. As far as getting into detail about, you know, pressure washing and things like that, we do not.
Okay, I didn't think so.
I mean, if you have an HOA, there might be certain sort of rules.
Yeah, but we don't have one, goodness, that's why I ruled here.
I think they have covenants, but no HOA.
Okay.
You know, I, I just said all that to say that I know how to maintain my property. I think I do a pretty good job, given I'm a single homeowner. And for the most part, most of my neighbors are respectful and polite, and we get along fine. Every now and then, you just have somebody who wants to put a wrinkle in, in it. That's all. Thank you.
You had me worried.
Thanks.
Yeah, that had me concerned, too. You're right.
Anybody else from the community, anything that did get a chance to sign in? Ted, do you mind coming up?
Really just to comment on some things I said.
Okay.
I'm Tim Hartwood. I'm the president of Castlefield, the Homeowners Association. And this is really just things I've heard during your meeting, and I just wanted to comment on them. You're talking about your, your employee job descriptions and things like that, and talking about spending some money, having lawyers looking at it. I'm sure that there's organizations that will look at that. There's probably, you probably have HR people in the community that would be happy to come in and review those and make sure that you're, you're following all the, all the guidelines. I'm sure that can be, I'm sure that you could have access to that. And as far as the newspapers are concerned, we can't have boxes where we are. So, and it's just, when you're, if you, when you get talking about this later on, and you say that you have to have a box to put them in, we can't have them in our neighborhood. So that's, that's the, that's the only thing that is going. And then the last thing I had, does relate to Castlefield. And a couple months ago, we had someone come in and siphoned some water out of our fire hydrant. I don't know whether that. Do we have any, any update or anything on that?
No, Mr. Bowen, it was explained to Mr. Bowen that, you know, we gave him all the information in the police report, and then you folks would have to follow through with that.
Okay.
Because the fire hydrants in the water system is, is your system.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. We've just gone through a transition of, of, of the, the board, so that's probably been lost somewhere along there. I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Beth Hill, I'm the administrator at Longview Healthcare Center. And I just wanted to make a comment on the skateboard park. I was here for the presentation when the gentleman presented to you, and I thought they did a fabulous job. And I heard such good things about the open house or the demonstration that went on. The question I have is, can we, on behalf of Longview, donate something to the town? Like, give a check to the town and designate the funds for the skateboard park? And the reason I ask about that is because the setup that they have for this endeavor, which we value, is more of a informal, like a GoFundMe, et cetera. So for businesses, we're not really able to, to donate to that sort of thing. But I would be glad to donate to the town with designated funds.
I think that we can, but.
I would think that you could. I know that we had a discussion just today with what we're going to order with their funds and our funds for the skate park. And I did ask him, what we're ordering this material, is that enough to do what they want to do? And he said, not, we weren't ordering enough, they're working on getting more funds to do additional stuff. So we can check with the group to find out when they think that next phase will happen, and, and let them know that, you know, you all would be willing to, to enforce this.
That'd be good, we may want to, I mean, this is really taking off. We may want to set up a separate fund.
Just, right, designated, we have a designated, we have quite a few designated funds for specific purposes. They can't be commingled and so forth. So we could probably open up a specific skate park.
If it's not too much trouble, but we'd like to do something for it, or donate a thing, if there's a thing, that we could donate to the town on their behalf, you know, within a certain range. So anything you could do along that line would be appreciated.
Yeah, I think Stephen Kelly could probably work with you. Yeah, just on the logistics. I mean, I know these kind of things can be done, we just want to make sure we're doing it the right way. But, I mean, you're trying to do something great for the community, they're doing something great for the community, there's got to be a way to make this work. So I think, we, we can look into the logistics, just make sure that, fund accounting-wise, we're doing things the proper way, then we'll, we'll work with you to make sure. And we appreciate you stepping up and agreeing to do something that is outside the bounds of what your core purpose is, but, you know, you're a valued member of the community, and I think it's amazing that you guys are doing that, so.
Sure, they'll love it, they'll, they'll be very appreciative, I'm sure.
Well, we value people, and of any age, but really, the presentation was so great. And here are men who are a little bit more on the mature side, doing something great for all the citizenry. So we want to support it, thanks.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Anybody else? We'll move into reports. Councilwoman Smith?
I don't have anything to report, I have a meeting with the Cable Commission next month. I wasn't able to make the last one, so I'll have information at the next meeting.
Okay. Councilwoman Miller?
Okay, our Paint the Ri, the Paint the Town Patriotic Red, White, and Blue Decorating Contest is underway. It takes place the first week of, well, Carnival week of July. I believe it's on the town Facebook page, website. It's been dispersed through Mama, so please consider entering if you're able, and decorating your house in red, white, and blue for the week of the Fourth of July. The money that we collect goes directly into the scholarship fund that the town provides to students based on volunteer hours and those sort of things. One other thing that I thought of, Chief, and I didn't think of it prior. When Steve said something about possibly shutting down a road for the skate expo, for lack of a better word, is it possible for us to consider Westminster Street, the section between Twenty-Seven and York, and the Hill, and Park Avenue, for parade setup for staging? The Fire Department does the parade, and a lot of people line up there. I've noticed the last couple years that because they take over one entire side of the road, people are going across the L-line on that blind curb, it's just, it's scary, sitting there. If, just, even if it's just for the staging portion, or make it one way.
It's ruffled in that corner, I know what you're talking about.
It is, it's scary. Okay, thank you.
Excuse me. Jen, one other thing. On the patriotic decorations?
Yes.
The conversation I had with the, the folks at Grace Bible, they agreed to kind of help push this and advertise at their church, so if you and I can touch base offline, and we'll kind of get all the details today, and I think over the next week or so, they'll, they'll kind of push it out to their.
I have the flyer saved as a PDF, so I can just, if you have a contact, I can send it to them.
Okay, perfect. Councilman Pacelli?
The next Manchester Area Merchants Association meeting is June twenty-first. A little unclear as to where it would be, Pete. I think it's at Dutch Corner, because of the Fuchs thing last month?
I don't really know.
Okay, you'll have to check the website on that. But what was fascinating at last month's meeting is that we went on a tour of the Fuchs Spice Company. And I had no idea how fascinating that place is. They have research and development, they have sensory rooms, they have a testing kitchen, they make all kind of different products. The warehouse is, I think, virtually beyond belief as to the size. When you look at that building, the majority of that building is a warehouse, and it is phenomenal. So that was a very fascinating experience, and I thought very helpful for the Merchants Association as far as big thinking and vision. So it was great.
You said the twenty-first for the next meeting?
June twenty-second, first, yes. Councilman Walter?
Okay, Planning and Zoning Commission, a public hearing was held on the comprehensive plan last month, where Jim Schumacher presented all the details, which will be presented to the council during the August meeting. But the, the plan will be given to the council in advance for their review. And again, I want to offer a big thank you to the Planning and Zoning Commission for all their hard work on the comprehensive plan. Michelle Wilder, through her leadership and all her work with consultants and town and county representatives and attorneys, and the Planning and Zoning Commission, did a great job planning for the town's future. So my hat goes off to them. And that's it.
Okay. Ms. Gary is not here tonight, I believe she's probably at the Senior Cruise downtown, right?
She is. Yeah.
Do they call it now?
I think she said the Senior Cruise.
Senior Cruise, yeah. So we'll be, and again, I know she's done a great job over the past year, I think we'll be in the, on the lookout. I don't know where we are in the search for that, but we'll be on the lookout for a new youth representative over the next year or two. Anything else for this group before we adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn? I'll second the motion.
All's in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Alright, good night.